I don't know.
Oh, I don't know why.
So is Amanda.
So we're heard in chorus.
Okay, echo. Okay.
Okay.
Ready to rock and roll.
So here we go.
Okay, I call the planning board meeting for April 4th, 2023 to order at 6:05 PM. All right, eat on that baby. Okay, very good. Our first item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item is public comment. We don't have any public here, so we'll go by that. And we'll move on to minutes for 3723. They're in your packet, you emailed last Thursday. Does anybody have any comments, additions, subtractions? Or anything with, uh, needs minutes?
Make a motion, accept them as printed.
Okay, very good. I have a motion from Les, do I have a second? Second from Amanda. Okay, no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is...
Is...
Oh, oh, those are the minutes from last. I was looking on there going... Uh, next item on the agenda is, I don't have it in front of me, but...
Is Jill's.
Is the master plan implementation committee member Jill Sackett. Informal discussion to review the portion of the town's master plan as currently assigned to the planning board. And I just want to make a mention that I am also a member of the master plan information, implementation committee.
I am as well.
I'm a member. What's that?
I said, I'm a member too.
Oh, yeah, I forget. Yes. Actually, we do, so, uh... Jill, the floor is yours. Jill Sackett, please introduce yourself.
Thank you for putting me on the agenda. I'm Jill Sackett. I am currently the chair of the master plan implementation committee, and I've got a great group working with me, including Guy and Amanda. So I'm really glad they're also here, so they can fill in any gaps I might have here with my presentation. As you folks are aware, the master plan is a very, very ambitious document. It was six years in the updating process with lots of meetings and deliberations and works, and then it went out for public comment, and this is what we have. It's, it's a, a lot in there. And one of the things that it called for was to form a master plan implementation committee, so that this document won't just get put in a file and not worked on. So we formed up, we've been going just over a year now, and we have tried a number of different approaches to meet with different groups and to make progress on this plan. The master plan implementation committee works with other stakeholders, people who have been given assignments in this master plan, right or wrong, good or bad, you know, to, to try to, um, uh, learn what, what's being done, and what more can be done, and put some schedules and goals around all of that. We have learned in meeting with a lot of different committees and boards that a lot is being done. But a lot of times, this isn't captured very well, or in a way that we can articulate to the public, or in a way that we can map easily to the master plan. What we're doing right now is just starting out with some, I'm gonna call them informal conversations with stakeholders. You are a stakeholder in the master plan, because the planning board has been assigned to be a lead or a contributor in a number of items in this master plan. And so we're, we're coming to you today to go through some of the, what we call baseline or shorter-term items in the master plan that are assigned to you as either a lead or as a contributor on that item. And lead means, for whatever reason, the people writing the master plan felt you were the most, um, relevant person to be in charge of that item, and as a contributor, the master plan felt you folks have some expertise, some skills, some area that can help make this thing happen, but you won't be the, um, number one accountable person to make it happen. So what I have here today is I've broken down for you and pulled out of this many-page master plan just those short-term and so-called baseline items that have listed the planning board as either a lead or a contributor. So I'm gonna pass these out to you.
Actually, Jill, if this is the email you sent...
Yes.
We do have copies of it.
Okay.
Nicole gave it to us in our packet. Does everybody have their copy?
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so you don't have to.
Okay. There are, well, thank you for doing that. There are seven items on there. And so we were hoping today to take a look at those seven items and get feedback from you folks. Just in terms of number one, um, do you understand what the thing is that's listed there? Number two, do you agree that the planning board in some capacity could work on this item? If, you know, theoretically? And then number three, if those are yeses, um, to talk a little bit about where you might be at with that. It may be that you've done with it. You may be that you have no idea what to do with it, or it could be something in between. And, and we're just starting this conversation. A lot of times, we're finding when we meet with people that, um, you know, people are short-staffed, or people, um, may be lacking certain resources, or there are certain fundamental things that have to be done in a stepwise fashion before the whole thing can be done. But we're just here to have that conversation and just start to collect some information around these items that are shown here. And if you don't mind, for an example, I can take your attention to one that will be pretty quick to dispatch, which is item number four on your list, which said, "Consider participation in the State Community Preservation Act."
That would be pretty quick.
So, so for an example, you know, you folks have already done that work as, as far as the planning board is concerned. You folks were listed here C as a contributor. And this talks a little bit about the CPA is. We've, we've learned what the CPA is, and we've had some decisions made on that. But as far as the planning board is concerned, you folks did consider participation in the CPA. And you folks met, and you made a vote, and you moved forward a recommendation. If I'm remembering correctly, the planning board did, did recommend participation in the CPA. But in other words, in terms of your work on this item, for the time being, it's done, right?
Correct.
So, so that's an example of the conversation we're having about each of these. That was an easy one. You know, I said some of these you might be done, some of these you may not have started. So we know about that one. The master plan implementation committee knows. And that one we can table, but let's look at some of these other ones if you can. And the top three, you folks are listed as leads. So I'm most interested in talking to you about the top three. And the first one on that list says, "Adopt Massachusetts Chapter 43D, allowing for expedited permitting on pre-approved parcels." Now, I don't have a faintest idea what that is. But perhaps, and hopefully you folks do understand what that means. But let's start with that question. Do we know what that even means?
Well, I, I don't know if any of the other people do. But, uh, expedited permitting, uh, the way I read the law, and I just looked at it this afternoon, it has to do with parcels of land that you get pre-approved to, you know, development. This is more for a city type of thing. I don't think it applies that well to Winchandon, but we can go through it. It's not going, I don't think it's a priority item, because we have no, uh, maybe business park that needs to have that done, or, uh, you know, a housing development at this point. But it is something that, I think this could be moved from short to midterm. You know, it's not that we're gonna forget about it, but it's not, expedited permitting, the statement, uh, sounds different than what the law actually is.
Yeah, short term, just in case, I know that I didn't define those for you folks. According to the master plan, short term are actions that have low risk and/or certain reward, and they are meant to be done in about zero to two years' time.
Well...
Medium, medium term are projects that take longer to achieve, need ongoing planning, or may require significant financial investment, one to five years.
You know, I, I don't disagree with this, but I don't think it's a high priority item for the town of Winchandon. We have no pieces of property, but yes, it should, uh, move along. And I, when you talk about expedited permitting, it just doesn't mean everything. It means specific, uh, thing you have to have pass by town meeting. You have to have a committee look at pieces of property that you want to do the expedited permitting for. And I can't see anybody right here or anything that's in the pipeline at the moment. So it is something to look at, but it's not something that is of, uh, emergency. I don't know if anybody else has any other opinion on it. And I really don't know that much about it, but it's just what I've looked at, and it's a, it's a process. For, it's more for city, city people. You know, to use a term otherwise. Or, you know, uh, towns that are really developing, and, you know, have developments going and things of that nature.
All right, so if I can paraphrase, so you don't think there are that many parcels that would even be...
Well, that somebody would bring to us...
Available to apply Chapter 43D to? Is, is that what you're saying?
What's that?
You, that, that in, in a, in a town like Winchandon, there would, there wouldn't even be that many parcels of land to which one could apply Chapter 43D?
Uh, there are parcels that could apply, but first they have to have somebody decide that they want to do something with it. You know, for the expedited permitting. And right now, there's nothing in the pipeline, no, uh, talking of that. But it's something that, yes, we will look at. I'm, I'm just trying to give a more information on what expedited permitting is.
Well, I think, I think we do a pretty good job now.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a complicated situation like the city of Worcester is, or something like that, or even Pittsburgh.
We don't get ten people in here at one time looking for permits, I mean.
Yeah, and it's a very focused on pieces of property, not just the general process of expedited permitting.
So, so a, the, the normal process, Les, you're saying, more or less, is, um, seems to be working well? In other words, we don't really need to worry about a 43D expedited process? Because most things are moving through here reasonably fast?
We don't have a piece of property coming down the pipeline or that's come through that can utilize expedited permitting. It's not for every project. You know, that, that's a misconception when you hear that term. It's like expedited permitting where the people don't have to go to, uh, ZBA, then to this board, then to this board, uh, where a, uh... And I'm not even sure. I won't explain it, because I, I don't know if my explanation's right. But as far as the way to have expedited permitting worked is you need a committee, you need to go to town meeting, you have to have it approved to a appointed committee that looks at these pieces of property. Nobody has a piece of property that they're bringing to us that wants to put a business park on, for lack of a better word, or a, uh, 10,000 square foot factory.
It does sound like, it does sound like if, if, if that did happen, you know, if a, if a parcel came along that was suitable for expedited permitting, it sounds as here, according to the master plan, and I'm, I don't know this, but that, that you would have to have, quote, "adopted" Chapter 43D, and it kind of had that in the hopper? Or have that as a process available to you? And right now, you don't have that process available to you, because you have not adopted 43D? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, basically, yes.
Okay. Okay.
But again, put it this way, we, we have had, uh, expedited processing means basically going through one, one board, and we've taken our boards and had a meeting with both boards. So small town, that's not as applicable. My understanding, now if somebody else has a better understanding, but...
Okay.
So, yeah, that's something to...
Everybody's okay? We're, we'll put that in as a...
But not a high priority because of all the other things, the bylaws and the stuff we have going now.
Yeah, so you're recommending this move to medium term?
I work on it when we find time.
Pardon me?
We're, work on it when we find time.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the timing here, you're suggesting, you're recommending that we change it from short term to medium term?
I, I, that's my opinion.
Okay. Everybody's, we're all, we'll move along if we're good with that one for now?
And I have the luxury of just reading it this afternoon, so...
Okay. We'll go on to strategy HO11, which was in housing. You folks were indicated as leads on this, so the question is, let's first read what it says. Create a housing production plan, or an HPP. It gives communities that are not yet in compliance with Chapter 40B the opportunity to show that they're making progress in constructing affordable housing. An HPP would also help the town determine the projected housing needs of its current and future population.
I think I turn that over to Nicole to answer.
Yes, we currently are working with MRPC on a housing production plan. We had a couple of hearings last year, I believe one in September, one in December, and they're supposed to be having a final plan for us soon.
Okay, so this was one that's underway?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, RPC is...
MRPC.
M, M R, Monatucuset?
Monatucuset Regional Planning Commission.
Ah, okay. Regional Planning Commission, okay. And you folks are the lead on that, working with them?
Yes, we are. We're working with Karen.
Okay, yeah. And so you said you had a September and December meetings?
Yes.
And so this, this is something that's in progress?
Yes, yeah, we had just currently attended a training at, um, Holy Cross College, and they happened to sit at our table. And they said they're, you know, it's, it's very soon to come to Winchandon, so...
They're promising it within a month or two?
Yeah, yeah, very, very shortly.
We will, I mean, that's how far along we are on this.
That in a month or two, sorry, what would happen?
We'll have a month or two, we'll have the plan.
Yep.
Okay, so, so in turn, if, if, if I were trying to create some kind of timing around this, you thinking you'll have an HPP drafted or finished, or in some finalized state in a couple of months?
Uh, yeah, yeah, two or two to three months, I would say.
Yeah, depends on MRPC, their workload.
They have a lot of projects going on right now, so, but they ensured that we'd get it very, very soon.
So that you're kind of partnering, is, is it, are you partnering with them?
Yes.
Or they have to, yeah.
Yep.
Partnering with them? And they help you write it, or do they have to approve it? Or what, what's their role?
So the first step was to get public input. And they got public input from, um, senior housing, things like that, different households, different age groups, different...
They did a survey, too.
Yeah, they did a survey, mm-hmm, yeah, to kind of get the input from the town. And then they created a housing production plan based on that input of our needs.
The MRPC does that?
MRPC, yep.
Okay.
Yep, okay. So, yeah, we've been working on that.
I know, right? I gotta stand them. All right.
Yep, so that is...
So two to three months, so I'm gonna say, uh, April, May, June, July, if we send, maybe by July?
You can check back with us, then, we should have something.
Yeah, no, I don't know the process it has to go through to get approval from the town, whether it's just a selectman.
All right, I believe it's a selectman, uh, meeting, and then planning board meeting, I believe?
Yeah, something like that, you know, but...
Yep, it does have to go before town meeting.
Karen Chapman, who is handling this, will, will be guiding us through it. So we're, we're at, basically at their mercy.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Okay, well, good. See, what's it, this isn't so hard. Next one. Establish a committee or task force to coordinate the development, promotion, and updating of, and it, it makes cross-reference, but what it, that is, is a list of all programs and services available that can make a difference in the quality of life. That's a very vague sounding thing. This came out of the health and wellness action area of the master plan. And, um, so I think to understand that a little better, if you go look at what 5-1 is on that, health and wellness. This is getting back to an overall goal that says, "Ensure that all residents across demographics are aware of all the programs and services available that can make a difference in their quality of life." And there were two items in that. Let's see, their quality of life, and then we go to 5-1, which said, "Research," this was a, um, "research workable options that have been used by other communities or regions to provide accurate, timely, and accessible information to residents." That's not assigned to you, that's 5-1. What they're really...
Now, where is this, uh, what page are you on?
That's out of the master plan.
Yeah, I have the master plan, we have a copy.
It is on page 27.
23?
Yeah, Nicole, you're, you're close, yeah. And, um, so basically, I think what, what this master plan is charging you folks with is just the approval or the establishment of the committee or task force that's going to update the resource that's being created by another body in 5-1. So you're, this is dependent on the work being done in 5-1. And the work being done in 5-1 is assigned to, uh... 5-1, 5-1. Is assigned to the communications committee with whom I am meeting tomorrow. So, um, we can note that. We can say, you know, this is dependent on 5-1 happening, because once this...
Uh, Jill, I'm, I'm just, from what you're saying is, I don't see how the planning board get charged with this. Wouldn't that be something more that the, uh, town manager's office would deal with? Or, uh, somebody that points, I, I don't see the relation between planning and this.
Yeah, so that's, that's the first question. We, once we understand what this is, then the question is, are you guys the relevant people? Like, were you folks the people that approved the master plan committee? Like, what, when do you folks...
That's our charge, is the master plan, to approve the master plan and approve the master man...
Okay.
Committee. That's a planning board's charge.
Okay, so in this case, this health and, this, this work being done where the communications committee is gonna be asked to research workable options that have been used by other communities or regions to provide, um, accurate, timely, and accessible information. This is all gets to, you know, what do we do? Do we have a website? Do we have a newspaper? Do we have a fat Facebook page? You know, like, what are, what are we doing to get information disseminated? And then eventually, the idea would be, she, the master plan envisions needing some kind of committee or task force to make, as an ongoing basis. You know, to coordinate the developing and the promotion and the updating of whatever that is that the communications committee comes up with. So if that's not in your remit, then that's the feedback I need today.
Yeah, I, I don't know who would be...
So you're saying to make sure our website's up to date with all the latest information if somebody was to need to find a resource for something?
No, well, what I'm saying is, um, there's another committee that's charged with figuring out how to better communicate stuff to our residents.
Anything, yep.
Whatever that is. We, we, we have, that's not determined yet. And they're, they're charging the communications committee with that, you know, for better or for worse.
I would say the town manager's office primarily updates the website with anything that we need put on it, like on that main page. They're responsible for doing that.
I don't know that that's gonna end up being the solution here. So, so I think what, what this is trying to say is it's trying to say, um, we need something better than what's happening right now. So they're trying to get the communications committee to take that on and come up with whatever that's gonna be.
Yep.
And then once they come up with that, we're going to need an entity probably more than the communications committee to manage that. And so, um, the part two is some, but they're, they're, the master plan's saying somebody needs to be responsible for forming that committee or board to work on dissemination of, uh, of resources and communication. And so if that is not, the planning board doesn't feel that's their remit, that's the feedback I take back for the master plan right now. That, that you feel it's, that's not in your remit, and, and it's, it should be assigned to someone else. Whether it's town, whether it's the town manager, whether it's the board of selectmen, whether it's...
That, that seems like the root...
Communications committee...
That would be better to go, because they have control over the, they have permissions.
Would be the moderator?
Yep.
Now, it could be, there's a lot of different, but I don't think planning board is, you know, with all the things we've got, is that something? Because we can't even have a full board, basically, so trying to put a committee together is like...
I would say that's more board or selectmen.
Stickin' a, stick in your eye.
Okay, that, I, I'm gonna just put that down as feedback, and we can move on. And we've talked about the CPA, so we will move on down to...
And I want to mention that, uh, to me, the CPA is not dead, and it will again. The planning board championed it in, uh, 2011, 12, and, uh, I can see them doing it again if, last time the town manager did it by committee. But, uh, next time, let's try it by doing it by a board in a year or two.
Yeah, the, um, yeah, we can say for the time being, you know, if you'd like, I think, I think today, we don't know how soon that's gonna get revisited. I, that's my understanding from Justin, is that they're gonna do kind of a, uh, postmortem on, you know, what happened, what went well, what didn't go so well, where are we gonna go from here, lessons learned? I haven't, maybe, Amanda, you would know better?
It hasn't been set for a date, but it has been discussed that that needs to happen. So we don't have a set time to do it, but...
Yeah.
It has been discussed that we need to...
So...
It's not dead yet, it's, you know...
Yeah, so, so I mean, maybe you can, we can do something like, you know, the feedback is you, you guys did this work. You, you did make a recommendation. It did make it all the way to a special town meeting.
Years ago.
Yeah. And should this come up again, we can, this is a living document. We can always pull this one out again and say, "We're back at it."
Yeah, who's gonna do it this time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So far, we've done the planning board, the historic commission, by committee, so where do we go now?
All righty. Our next item, item five, is where you're a contributor. So this one is, um, a little bit different, because you guys are not leads on this, but you are a contributor. And this one is in economic development, 5.7. Consider policies to encourage green development in commercial, industrial, and residential buildings and operations. So... So, um, in terms of, oh, let's see, I don't have that one. But this may be something that, as your business, you already are doing in some way, shape, or form.
Yep.
So.
Actually, Nicole, do you wanna mention about us being a green community?
We are a green community, Jill. I don't know if you were aware of that, but we have received numerous grants throughout the years since twenty seventeen, um, for different measures, taking the lights at town hall, weatherizations, the lights in the schools, heating system in the schools, different things like that. So, we are a green community, um, as well as, um, you know, abiding by the building code, too, as well. Um, you know, they, we are a stretch energy community as well.
So, this is a baseline item, which basically means, um, the master plan identified things that it felt that we should just kind of fundamentally be doing or working on, and if we aren't, we should be looking hard at those. It sounds like fundamentally, um, that is something you guys have baked in.
Yes.
And so, um, it's asking, so it's asking, consider policies. So, we can say, the answer is, we are already a green community, do we already therefore have some kind of policies? I, I didn't quite catch what you said about that.
Uh, we're not, no certain policies in place, but we do, um, receive grants from D O E R for, to improve buildings in the municipality, um, to make them more energy efficient and compliant.
Mhm, mhm.
Yep.
And in the past, we have promoted, uh, green policies when somebody comes to develop, such as when C V S came in.
Yes.
In different, uh, proj, projects, we encourage it.
Yeah, and so, would you say, according to this one, would you answer by saying, um, you feel you're, you're contributing already, you're, you're there?
It's an ongoing process.
It's an ongoing process, you're already there?
Part of our everyday practice.
Not there, but.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's part of our everyday practice, 'cause being a green community, you're alw, you're also a stretch energy community.
Okay.
So, it's, that goes with building, um, anything in the, you know, in the town of Winchton.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna double-check E D five seven. If we, you can probably get there fast and I can't, Nicole, with that thing. Um, back up to economic development, which is on page eleven and twelve. I'm looking at E D three seven, E D five seven. Consider policies to encourage green development. I'm looking to see, under baseline, A D five seven. Planning and development is the only other entity involved in this one, according to the master plan, and they are listed as the lead, in terms of considering, you know, the, the way it's phrased here. So, it's the two, those two.
Could you move the microphone a little closer to you, Jill?
Oh, yeah, planning and development is the only other entity assigned to this one.
Yeah.
And they are listed as the lead, and you folks are listed as contributors.
That would've been.
I would agree with that, yep, I would agree with that, yep.
Okay, well, then we will move along. We have T R, um, which is transportation, and this one says, continue to seek funding for infrastructure projects on local jurisdiction, federal aid eligible roads through the M M P O tip process. Lots of abbreviations here. Work with the M R P C, which I just learned what that was.
Yes.
And Mast dot on projects and funding baseline, and funding opportunities. And this is kind of, again, identified as kind of a fundamental baseline thing that they hope you guys do.
Yeah.
And you're listed as a contributor, and, um, you are not the lead on that. T R four three, and, uh, let me see, T R four three baseline. Baseline.
I imagine the D P W would be.
Yes, T R four three. Continue to seek funding. There are various people involved in this one, D P W is the lead, planning board, town manager, and planning and development are listed as contributors.
Now, as far as we are concerned with this, we are doing this, I am, uh, the representative to the M P O. Uh, go to their meetings and we advocate for Winchton. Brian Proto is also on the M P O, he goes and he advocates for Winchton, and I am chairman of the M R P C. So, uh, I'm there, uh, leading it. So, Winchton is getting great at, uh.
Representation.
Presentation on the board, so, but it's an ongoing process, every year the tip changes, and you have to jockey for position on the tip and get your projects ready and.
So, so, is it fair to say, um, per the master plan, we are continuing actively to seek funding for infrastructure projects on local jurisdiction, federal aid eligible roads through these processes that are listed here? I mean, that it's, you guys are doing this?
We are advocating strongly for that.
Okay.
For our projects, and, uh, you can see it by the road we get done.
All right, yeah.
Good to know, to your surprise.
Last one. This one is land use, and you folks are listed as contributor on this, and this is enforce the existing zoning while supporting the planned development zones goal of walkable mixed-use development. Land use, and this is a baseline, again, something that's considered kind of a fundamental thing that we should all be doing, one three, and you folks are listed as contributor. Zoning Board of Approval's listed here, but then there's a lead called zoning enforcement.
That's our building inspector, he is.
Okay.
Building inspector slash, uh, code enforcement.
Okay, okay.
'Cause the planning board does not have any enforcement capabilities.
Okay.
We can only approve projects or, uh, recommend the laws, we can't, uh, enforce them once, uh, we've approved them.
Yeah, so, planning board doesn't enforce, but I think, in terms of contribution, you're, I guess, it's, you, you enforce this existing zoning, this is, um, building inspector, you're saying?
Bill, building inspector slash.
But supporting planned development zones goal of walkable mixed use. So, in other words, the contributing piece that I guess the master plan's asking of you, is are you supporting planned development's goal of walkable mixed-use development as a baseline activity and, you know?
We, we have done that, and we are doing it in the new bylaws that we are working on proposing, so, yes, we are.
So, you said your bylaws are going to be articulating some of?
Well, we're hoping, you know, we got shot down like the CPA did, so we're going back again.
We're going back for Article nine, signs, signed bylaws.
Oh, that's part of it?
Mhm.
The sign bylaws?
Yeah, that's just the first part.
That's still out there in draft, or what, that's still a work in progress, the sign?
No, it's, hopefully, it will get passed at May town meeting.
It's, it's just one part of a complete redo of our bylaws, zoning bylaws.
Yes, yes.
So, we're working on this one.
Okay. Will, um, encourage support, new bylaws will encourage support of the mi, walkable mixed-use development, is that basically? And they're, they're gonna be up for a vote in May. Okay. There, there, thank you, Jill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
I'm gonna take this back to the M P I C. I hardly have to, 'cause half of them are here. With, with what we've learned today on this, and what we're doing, um, when it's appropriate is we do cycle back, if we don't, you know, we'll, we'll cycle back occasionally, maybe it's just an email to the chair, or, you know, um, how, what's, you know, did this, you know, for example, we might cycle back to you on the housing production plan, hey, did that actually get finished up in July? Those sorts of things.
Yeah, feel free.
And there are other medium and long-term goals in the master plan, so, we aren't looking at those right now, but I would encourage you, as your time and availability is, um, to take a look at what else planning board might, what, what might be asked of you in the master plan as we move along and time marches on, and, and some of these other things might come along. You might find that you're already working on them, even though they're listed in there as medium or long-term goals, you might already have something to say about them. And, any questions for me?
I just wanna thank you, Jill, for all your hard work on that, this is, I see you all over the place. I won't say that twice.
It's, it's, it's good to try to keep this thing alive, you know, and, and, and I, I think another thing that's really neat about the master plan is it's a structured way for groups such as you, um, to show that you're doing good work in, you know, in the community, you know, and you can map it to things that are in here and go, well, the planning board's been working on this whole H P P thing already, blah, 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 you know? It's just a nice structured way to, um, help communicate that out to the public and track it, so, all good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Mhm, which is?
Which is.
Article nine.
I don't have the, uh, item number here, but is, uh, discussion of, uh, oh, there we go.
Oh, hang on, hang on, I'm getting there. Yep, 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 yep.
Not that quick.
There you go.
Okay, Article nine, signed bylaw on zoning revisions. Review proposed Article nine for, uh, discussion revision prior to public hearing scheduled for four eighteen twenty-three. Discussion about the future review of all zoning bylaws. Actually, uh, just so the people are looking, we, uh, will be having a public hearing on the subject, four eighteen, uh, so, please show up for that, or, uh, if you have any comments after this discussion, uh, please send them to, uh, Nicole.
Mhm.
Or, uh, the planning office, uh, any of your comments, since we don't have any public here. First item I'd like to do here is, because it says, uh, discussion about, uh, the bylaws, uh, I wanna just make a little mention about how we ended up here. Uh, back a few years ago, about three years ago, planning and development, Tracy Murphy, decided that we need to update our bylaws, it was an ongoing discussion. So, what she did is, she went, she got a grad, it was in twenty-some thousand dollar figure, hired, uh, Brovitz, uh, Community Planning and Development and Design, to, uh, take a look at our bylaws, do an audit, and then, uh, rewrite the bylaws accordingly. Now, they did an audit, and the audit for Article nine signs said things like, new diagrams of different sign types, an example, photos should be updated and integrated into this section rather than by reference in the zoning bylaws, certain prohibited signs such as roof signs, painted wall signs, murals, should be considered with good design standards, revised design and placement standards are needed for projecting signs, neon signs, wall signs, and subdivision signs, and additional signs should be added, such as marquee signs, monument signs, window signs, vertical banner signs, yard bracket signs, on and canopy signs, suspended signs, business park gateway signs, and display cases. Now, these are the recommendations coming from Ted, uh, Ted Brovitz. So, what he did, uh, after these recommendations, he got together with Tracy Murphy, uh, did up a bylaw, and then presented it to the planning board.
Mhm.
And Tracy and Ted thought that the first, the best article, because they had rewritten all the, uh, sections of our bylaws, but felt that the signed bylaw was the easiest one to get by town meeting. Little did they know our town meeting. So, now we are here, it's been, uh, rejected once. Uh, we have some revisions because of discussions, uh, by people the last time and comments, so, that's why we're sitting here. So, we're gonna give it a shot again. So, we have Article nine signs. In front of you, you have, um, proposed amendments. These are proposed amendments that we had suggested the last time, but for some reason, they did not get into the Article nine that was presented as a warrant article, uh, at town meeting. And these are some of the suggestions that came by, so, uh, you have in front of you, uh, this proposed amendment, Article nine signs, uh, with additions, subtractions, corrections, and if anybody, you know, we'll go through this and, uh, look at it. Amanda, you were here for the signs, correct?
Yes, I was.
And, uh, so was Les, so was Bert, um, so, these are all, we've known before, but if you remember, uh, I think we all have, uh, this Article nine sign, proposed amendments with the yellow on it.
Mhm.
The yellow are corrections, such as nine point one, we had, the last discussion we had before town meeting was that we'd add the word residents. As you see here, residents underlined, but that did not get into the, uh, the, uh, warrant article. And then, uh, if I can go over the changes that we, we actually asked them to do back in those days and never got put in, and I have a few suggestions along the way, but if anybody has some suggestions also, please, uh, please bring them up here, and, uh, maybe we can incorporate them for our hearing. 'Cause the hearing's what we are setting up for. Now, we go back to, uh, the next section here, we go down to nine point one seven. This is from our previous signed bylaw that we have right now. This sentence here, I thought, would be nice to bring over, because if you remember at town meeting, people were very concerned about, uh, their rights being taken away, putting out political signs and things like that, so I thought, this is in our bylaw already, Sophie brought over, preserve the character of the community while allowing all residents and businesses their constitutional right to freedom of speech. And take away the word and, because it was another line, and, we'll go down to promoting the public safety and welfare. So, that's one of the changes. I don't know if you agree, don't agree with that, but, uh, any comments? Then we go down to the end of this page. All, nine point two point three. All private signs placed on public property or within public right of way are subject to approval by the town manager or his, her designee according to provisions set forth in the town manager's policy and procedures. This is a new addition we asked to be put in. Here, you have to excuse some of the mistakes here, should've been underlined to indicate that that is new words, but those are all new words. So, then, uh, so that's that page, if anybody has any comments now, please do, or if you wanna wait for the end. Okay, then we go on to, no changes on nine two, nine three. Thought they had a change on that. Uh, money got moved over to nine four. On my list here, this is previous to adding some other things, so, shifted it. So, our next page is nine point four, that we have something new, and it's just two words that were added in electrical service. All electrical fixtures requiring new devices. Those two words are new in that piece right there, that's the only new words in that. And I, I remember, I can't remember why we asked that to be put in. I don't know if you remember.
Because it's a new fixture.
What's that?
Because it's a new fixture.
Okay, very good. Requiring new devices, okay, very good. Because it's a new fixture, thank you, Les. Then we go down to the bottom of page nine point four. This is a suggestion I have, this was not by the board, but I think we should give people as much freedom, uh, for signs, and the A-frame sidewalk signs, in the old version that we put in front of the town meeting, had no for R eighty, no for R eight, uh, R forty, and no for R ten, and no for industrial. I can't, I, I have no problem with A-frame or sidewalk signs, if they're done correctly, so I thought if we changed that from a no to a special permit, that way we could put limitations on it, whether we say, okay, you can do this for X number of weeks.
Mhm.
Isn't the zoning law now?
Well, isn't the zoning law now ninety days?
Uh, yeah, ninety days is the limit.
Temporary signs.
On the signs.
Temporary.
Temporary, but with no, completely, you know, they can't have them.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're, people should be able to put out signs and things like that. I don't, I don't think it makes it look bad.
I don't have any disagreement with that.
Okay. So those are the other ones. And if anybody has any comments, please tell me they suck, but... Okay, then the next page we go is to 9.13. Everything here is the same as we did before. If anybody has any... Ah, and there is one thing that we will, did you, about electronic signs, we had discussed.
I believe that's coming down. That's under monument signs. I have that highlighted in yellow.
Specifications.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see on 9.9.
9.12.
9.12 is that page. Okay, it's not on my list. Okay.
Prior to that, we do have G under suspended signs.
Uh, okay, hang on one second here.
It's?
Oh, okay.
Page 9.12.
Ah, okay, now I see where it's gone.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next page we have is 9.12. This is a change that was done in our last go-around. It's not something new. And it is, information on a signs must be related to the business. That is new language.
Mm-hmm.
And then additional information is prohibited. That we struck out. So basically, information on a sign must be related to the business, which, you know, makes, makes perfect sense. And that's for, under suspended signs. Then we move on to page 9.13. A sign that, and we go under definitions of wall mur, we don't have murals. Definition, and the first line here has a change in it. A sign that is directly painted on or permanently affixed to the exterior wall. Previously, we had a sign that is directly painted on the exterior wall. We added "or permanently affixed." Just a little tweak on that one.
There's another one though on that too. That's the other thing.
What's that?
It should be, that sign should be updated yearly or something with the, with the, make sure that the thing doesn't fade and become a eyesore.
Okay, uh, what do you think on that? How we do that as?
We can make wall murals subject to a special permit and put conditions in a special permit saying it must be kept in good condition, or it must be updated.
And if it was attached to the building, it should be inspected to make sure it's not going to fall down.
Well, actually, wall murals require a special permit from the planning board already.
Okay.
But we might want to, to just let people know, because this is also informative to the people that are looking for signs. Is there, what words could we put in there that would, just the last sentence or something?
Let me get it here.
Let's see.
Because it will be in the special permit.
It will be in the special permit as conditions that they must seek a building permit and to maintain it on a regular basis. Yeah, we can...
A line about them maintaining them on a regular basis?
Yeah, that can be all part of the conditions of the special permit.
Special permit.
Yeah.
We can bring that subject up.
Yes, that'll be the conditions of the special permit.
Good, that's good. I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, you don't have a sign there for twenty years that...
Yeah.
It's painted today.
Yeah, like the sign up in Keene for the shoes.
Yeah.
That was there for the movie, looked great, but now it's starting to fade. Looked like hell. Okay, everything else is the same. Any questions over there, Amanda, or?
Nope, I don't have any.
Looked pretty good to you. This one here, we go into?
This is monument signs.
Monument signs. It's yellow. But most of this in the monument signs is here already. It's not underlined, but we have it highlighted in front of us. What was done is... Now, we have here electronic message boards and electronic message or display boards. Do we have that in any other place?
In this, in our, this article, right?
Any articles?
No.
Actually, what I would like to see is this, those two pieces, electronic messaging boards and electronic message or display boards, those two paragraphs, taking out of there and put directly into the bylaws. Because right now, that just deals with monument signs, but it should deal with all signs. You see what I mean? Or?
So you're saying that any one of the signs above can be electronic?
Uh, no, I'm, what do you mean? I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
If any other one of these signs that's presented is electronic, whether the wall sign?
Yeah, yeah.
The hanging sign, just make it general, not just for ground mount sign? Make it in general for all signs?
Well, actually, um... So in other words, electronic signs aren't allowed unless it's a monument sign, if we have it this way.
Yes.
How do you guys feel on that?
Well, most of the signs that are in now are monument signs, right?
No, not necessarily, because they're not, they don't have the same definition. They don't have the low profile with, with no open space on the ground. The fire department, you can probably say that is as close to a monument sign as you'll get. However, the Legion, who just went before the ZBA, their sign is not going to be a monument sign because it has a base with the sign that comes up. So I just think that electronic signs are something that are coming down the pipeline. They're new, they're informative to the public, they're easy to change, and they look nice. So I think that that, I think we should open up our views to electronic signs and, and put some ground rules in place. And that way, you know, it won't be so difficult to get through the ZBA or have to go through the ZBA for everything. We can just kind of look at it as on the planning board level.
I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
However, I think that the, the Legion and, and the fire department's got, got the right idea. You get a thirty-inch snowstorm, it's going to bury the sign.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have to have some clearance underneath it so that you can clear it out or do something, otherwise it's just going to...
Yeah, I mean, current...
I think we should take that part about electronic signs, those two paragraphs. And we take them and we put them and add them to the bottom of 9.6, which is sign illumination. Uh, you know, that has neon signs, backlit signs, internal illumination, exterior illumination, general. And I think if she takes those, puts it on that, we can still, at the hearing,
Mm-hmm.
have some other suggestions or additions on that to corrections. But at least we get them in a section on their own, and then we can maybe refer that any, any electronic side needs a special permit, you know, blah, 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 something like that.
Okay.
But I think for today, if we take that, we just get it out of there into the general bylaw. Okay, then.
So do we want to identify that under the figure 9.9.2, permanent principal signs? Do we want to put something, do we want to add something about electronic signs under there too?
Under what?
The 9.2.2 with all the different sign types, or no?
9.2.2.
The chart that's up the?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Chart that's on the screen.
Okay. Oh, on the chart. Might not be a bad idea.
Okay.
Uh, with special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
Got it.
Good idea. Okay. Now, you got that, Nicole, or anything else? You have any questions on that?
No.
And as I said, we can tweak it at the hearing again.
Mm-hmm.
But at least get people idea of what we got and putting it out ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Next, we go on to page fifteen that I see. If, if I skip something, there is a paragraph there that at the last, last year, we asked to be deleted. Two or more businesses served by a single common building entrance are considered one business for sign computation purposes, max two square feet for each linear foot of building frontage for the entrance. I think that, we decided that was too restrictive, that one entrance, you might have four companies there. You get one sign, a very small...
Correct.
You know, we want people to be able to advertise their sign. We're not, we're not conquered.
No.
Okay, my, my next suggestion here is personally mine. Page sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, see, it's so much better there. As you see, those ones in blue, they were...
They were Bs.
Uh, they were Bs, permitted only for approved home occupation, churches, schools, and related institutions intended for public access. I, I feel that's too restrictive. I think we'd be better off to have them in those special event signs and street banners permitted by special permit. If anybody has any objection to that, please speak up. I just think that, again, liberalizing our sign law to allow people the, do the most they can to promote their business.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what signs are all about, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, and then we go over to page nine, or seventeen, which is other temporary signs. And we changed this, this was just to the, from the billing inspector, eighty-six that, to zoning enforcement officer. Right now, our billing inspector and zoning enforcement officer are the same person. But I would hope that very soon, someday Justin will find the money to hire a zoning enforcement officer, that just his job is to enforce zoning because making the billing inspector do that along with his building inspecting job is not productive.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, uh, because right now, he's got so much work that he just, you know, you got to complain and file a written complaint to make him do it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, nobody's criticizing him that, but he's just, it's too much work. So that was one we had agreed on previously. Now we go to 9.18. We're getting near, near the end here, I think. We have exempt signs. This section was, we wanted put in the last time, but it was not put in the bylaw. Again, government signs, signs including movable signs erected and maintained by the town of Winchita and any other municipal corporation, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the federal government, or any land building or structure in use by such government entity, and, or any other signs erected by such government entity as a location required for public or environmental health, safety, and, or notification purposes, or announcing the date, time, and place of elections or town meetings. We put this in so the town, the town can put signs wherever they want, or government agencies.
Yeah, that was...
That's their right.
That was, that was the thing, that was the thing for the town election, the big signs down in town.
Yeah.
And that was, that was the reason for that. And also, if the state police or somebody want to close a road, they could put a sign there, the road's closed.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, the federal government can do whatever the hell they want, so.
Yeah.
Thumb their nose at us, but that's, so that's all new in here. Then we go down to prohibited temporary signs. I think the last time we had this discussion and we eliminated people signs as a prohibited sign. In other words, people signs is the guy that stands out there and promotes tax services, gives somebody a job. Now, I know the kid in Gardner, he is mentally challenged, that does the tax guy sign, gives him an income. Gives him work. Hell of a nice guy. And then we have illustrated examples of prohibited signs, balloon signs, air-activated graphics. We have that, and a few other signs here. But we caveat down to, even these, though these are prohibited, we go down to the last section, 9.12, planning board waiver. And this, this is a big point, I think, in our signed bylaw here, is because we don't want to restrict anybody with, no, you can't do that, even though it's a hell of a good idea. So we have a waiver here. The planning board may, in its discretion, may waiver or modify any of the requirements set forth in this section if the board determines that such a waiver does not derogate from the, from the purpose of the bylaw and is in the public interest. We should eliminate one of the "may's" in that statement. The planning board may, in its discretion, may waiver.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we should, but that, that gives us a caveat that allows people to do signs that maybe not be covered in this, that we haven't thought of. And I think with a board of five making that decision, it's not just one person's decision. It's a group decision and it's out there in the public. So to anybody that has objections to things, thinking that they're too strict, that gives us. Now, does anybody have anything else they think might?
Yeah, we covered it.
I guess I just want some more clarification on page 9.14, the very last paragraph there that says electronic messages or display boards must be continuous stream of light, non-flashing, except that the message may not change no more than once per ten minutes between the hours of five and eleven. So I know that going by the fire station sign, it changes more than once per ten minutes. So I'm wondering if that's overly...
Too restrictive?
Yeah.
And, and as you pointed that out, uh...
Like, I want to know what that board says, because it could have like an emergency stuff on it.
Yep.
And if it's only going to change once per ten minutes, I'm not going to see, I'm only going to see one message.
Yeah, so you think we should just strike that?
Or, or? May I make a suggestion on that? Because I looked at that, and why the heck would we do it between the hours of 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
And that's...
So after 11:00 PM, they can have it...
I, I, I thought there was a thing about that, that after eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock, they were going to be shut off. I thought.
Uh, what, do we see any, no, but we don't have anywhere in here that electronic signs need to be shut off.
But, uh...
Well, if we're eliminating, you know, that, allowing them the message to change during the day, what about just taking the, taking that same line and change it from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM? They can't change... They can't change, it has to be the same for 10 minutes, so that we don't have that flashing in the middle of the night? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. Or do we just eliminate that whole line? From "except."
Well, also, how are you going to enforce that?
Okay.
You really, there's really not a good mechanism for doing that.
I'm sorry.
There's really not a good mechanism for enforcing that.
Yeah. Good point.
And, you know, and two, people travel at all hours of the night, whether you work for, you know, first, second, third shift, you know, so you're always, you know, there's always information that, you know, people may want to take in.
I think it's a good thing that a lot of, electronic message or display boards must be continuous streams of light. I, I think that's a good point.
I do too.
You know, they, they can't be flashing. But eliminating from non-flashing on.
Yes. Okay.
How's that sound to you? Yeah. Now, again, this is probably not perfect, and we will find six months down the road.
If anybody out there that listens to this or is hearing us now has a better suggestion.
Yeah, someone might have to change it six months down the road, but at least it's a start.
Yeah, or if it creates a distraction in the neighborhood too.
Yes.
You know, depending on where the sign is. And again, you know, if you do it by special permit, these certain signs, you can make that a stipulation that, you know, changes will have to be made if it creates a distraction.
And we've already decided that they're going to be special permit.
Special permit.
Or at least we're presenting it as special permit.
Yep.
Good, good point. I'm glad you picked up on that.
I think it's good, we ought to try.
So is everybody in agreement that these changes should...
And I just have one question, the special permit granting authority for the special permits of the signs, are we still doing zoning board of appeals, or is it going to be planning board?
Doesn't it say that the planning board is the...
I just want to make sure.
I'm pretty sure it does say the planning board.
Okay, because that's switching it up from how we currently do it.
Yeah, and, and we did that last year.
Okay.
That was a permanent thing we...
Let's find it, just to make sure.
I couldn't find it.
Again, you know, I sometimes assume... Sign maintenance, max in building site, special, special permit review. Signs permitted by special permit, because I'm not going to mess me...
The planning board.
The planning board shall serve as the special permit granting authority.
Okay, perfect.
So, and...
All right. Excellent.
All right. So do you want a motion on that? Or I think by consensus, we just go by consensus.
I would say by consensus, because...
Does anybody disagree? No, then you have your instructions.
Okay, yep, I'll make the changes.
Think we've done what we need to do tonight. Does anybody have anything they'd like to comment? And again, if there's any public out there watching us, if you've heard something you don't like, please get ahold of Nicole, or chew the ear off any one of the board members. And please come to the public hearing.
Right, be here for the...
And that public hearing is the 18th of April at 6:00.
At 6:00.
Yeah, and we are going to be on the second floor here.
Great.
Second floor. Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Les, do I have a second?
I second it.
Amanda seconds it, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Minutes.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:20.
7:17.
How about 7:20?
Okay.